All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
Oh, come on, we're here to celebrate women tonight. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, thank you. Yeah, it's my honor to be the mistress of ceremonies, as I just found out about a minute ago, that I was going to be doing this. But when we look at women, and we look at what we're able to accomplish, it is absolutely amazing, because when I look at it, we are multitaskers. We are women, we do so much. Right now, I'm doing about nine days, right? And I'm here, and not only do we, I sit on the school board, but also I'm a professional as well. Let me tell you something, women have that innate quality to be organized, but also to be successful. And this is our opportunity to be able to celebrate women, and celebrate the women here in our district. So let's give them some appreciation first. And I'd first like to call up our president of the board to open us up with some welcoming remarks, Mr. Malik Evans.
Thank you all for being here today, and I think Commissioner Campos is, as she said, a prime example of all of the various hats that women wears. This woman has not slowed down, and if she gives birth here tonight, I'm out of here. But I think it's a prime example. I mean, I know that I am who I am, because I've, I came from a strong mother and father, but very, a very strong mother, who took an active role in my education. I'll tell you, my mother spent so much time in the back of school number 12 when I was a student there, that folks thought she was a teacher. So women really do play a strong role in terms of our overall educational system. You need only look to your parent, your mother, your grandparents, your aunts, your uncles. But also, I think we can look throughout history to see the contributions that women have made to society, and we know that they have been great. I hope that you all enjoy the ceremony today. People always say, why do you guys do these ceremonies? We do them because it's important to highlight positive things in our community. It is far time for the Rochester City School District to continue to tell the stories that you won't see on the front of the newspaper, that you won't hear on the radio, and that you definitely won't see on TV. So we are, we have to be our own best storytellers, and tonight, we're telling the story of some very strong women in this district. So thank you all for coming out, and I hope that you enjoy the evening.
And now, we're going to welcome up our superintendent, Jean-Claude Bressard.
Just a bit of history, if you look at the History Channel. In the early 19th century, women in the US were considered second-class citizens, whose existence was limited to the interior life of home and care of children. I know tonight, you're going to hear a bit about Susan B. Anthony, but just some overview. She began teaching here in Rochester at the age of seventeen, right here in our own city. Because again, in those days, teaching was similar to motherhood. Teaching was one of those professions that was only open to women. If you ever watched The Little Rascals, once a female teacher got married, she had to leave the profession and go back and stay at home. With someone, someone like me who has a seven-year-old daughter about to become eight, I can tell you, I am very interested in the life of women, making sure that she gets the right kind of education and training she needs to get, so that she'll never be dependent on anyone, or any man for that matter. So that's important for me as a father. And I can tell you too, looking at the achievement of our kids in our district and across the state, girls beat boys in every subject area, in every ethnicity. So perhaps one day, we may need to have, I guess, a male history month, but right now, I can tell you that, like Commissioner Evans said, we owe a lot to the women in our lives. My mother was always influential in everything I did. She's been gone about three and a half years, I miss her dearly. To this day, before I make a decision, I actually talk to her, wherever she is up there somewhere, but before I make a final decision. So again, for the women who are here, the ones who work in our schools, thank you for what you do.
Isn't it so true, in our lives, women, we've got people, women that acted as directors, we've had women that act as the nurturers, we have those, women play so many different roles in our life, and it really is such an honor for us to be able to recognize them. And now, we're going to recognize a very special woman, Susan B. Anthony, and we have a history of Susan B. Anthony, and it's going to be presented by Ellen Wheeler from the Susan B. Anthony House, who's the Director of Development and Public Relations. Please welcome her up.
I'm delighted to be here with you today, and more honored than I can say to be in the company of these wonderful women that you're honoring here this evening. Wouldn't Susan B. Anthony just love to be here to see you and to sing your praises? You are the epitome of everything that she stood for, believed in, struggled for, dreamed of, for the women of her day and for the women of all time. She was a person of great curiosity, tremendous courage, unbelievable persistence and perseverance, uncommon common sense, and tremendous conviction, and you are her true heirs. You have faced challenges and barriers that might have gotten in the way of your dreams, just as she did, and just like Susan B. Anthony, you had the courage to turn those barriers into doors of opportunity and walk right through them, and I applaud you. I'm going to share with you just a couple of little stories from Susan B. Anthony's life, great lessons for all of us of any day and any time. When she was a child, she attended a little school, and none of the teachers, many of whom were men, could teach her long division. Mostly, they also couldn't understand why anyone would want to learn long division, but the story goes that Miss Anthony wanted to, and she went home and appealed to her father, saying that she wanted to learn long division and the teachers couldn't or wouldn't teach her. So her father responded by setting up a classroom upstairs over his general store, and employed the best teachers he could find to teach both boys and girls every subject together. A lesson from Miss Anthony in curiosity, in determination, in never letting anyone tell you, you can't do something, or you're not smart enough. And I have to say also, that was a pretty remarkable thing for Mr. Anthony, we're talking about 1826. Do you know that when Miss Anthony was in her mid-20s, her family moved to Rochester? This was in the mid-1840s, before the Civil War, and the Anthony family members were all firmly opposed to slavery and worked very hard to abolish it. Their farm on Brooks Avenue became a regular meeting place of abolitionists. It was here that Susan B. Anthony first met Frederick Douglass, a friendship that lasted 50 years. As part of her work for the abolitionist slavery, Miss Anthony joined the anti-slavery lecture circuit, traveling from town to town, giving speeches condemning slavery. In 1861, she went on one of those lecture circuits, starting out in Buffalo, with plans to move from city to city all across the state. The crowds were hostile, they tried to keep her from speaking by any means possible. The mayor of one city tried to persuade her to postpone the speech, because he was very afraid there was going to be a riot. In Syracuse, she faced the angriest crowd of all, a mob that burned her in effigy as she was speaking, and dragged the burning likeness through the streets. Still, she continued on with her speech, and still she continued on lecturing across the state. She continued with her very public, very strong opposition to slavery, a lesson in courage for all of us, doing what you know is right, even when the rest of the world tries to tell you otherwise. Do you know that Susan B. Anthony got women admitted to the University of Rochester? Year was 1900, but she started this campaign 20 years earlier. In 1900, finally, the trustees agreed, after she had been hammering at them for 20 years, that women could be admitted if she and her friends could raise $50,000 to cover the expenses of providing for women students. They, of course, believed that that was an impossible amount of money, and never would be raised, and $50,000 in 1900 was a lot of money, but they badly underestimated Susan B. Anthony's determination. She and a committee of women worked for months, getting donations, large and small, from rich and poor, all around Rochester. Finally, the day came to meet with the trustees, and the total they had raised was a few thousand dollars short. Facing the trustees, many of whom were very wealthy people, and none of whom had contributed even a dime to this campaign, Susan B. Anthony herself made up the difference by pledging her own life insurance. So the trustees realized they had no alternative, and they had to let the girls in. She taught them a lesson in making commitments and sticking to them, and in putting your money where your heart is. And do you know that Susan B. Anthony appeared before Congress, the Congress of the United States, every year, for almost 40 years, every spring, until she was 86 years old, trying to get Congress to pass an amendment allowing women the right to vote? Forty years, can you imagine? She appeared one month before her death in 1906, and still she hadn't seen the outcome she worked all of her life to achieve. In fact, it took another 14 years after that, in 1920, before the 19th Amendment was passed, granting women the right to vote. And guess what that amendment was called? The Susan B. Anthony Amendment. Miss Anthony teaches us a lesson in perseverance and dedication, and in never, never, never giving up, no matter what anyone else says or does. A few months before her death in 1906, when voting rights for women still seemed a long way away, a reporter asked her about her defeats. She replied, "Defeats? There have been none in my life and work. All our defeats have been glorious victories. We never lose, we are always progressing." So in sharing Susan B. Anthony's lessons today, I bring you her message. May all of your defeats be glorious victories. Always keep progressing. She's right there with you, cheering you on your way, and if you ever need a rebirth of inspiration, come and visit us at the Susan B. Anthony House. We have lots more stories to keep you going. Congratulations from everyone at the Susan B. Anthony House.
You know, there's one word to really define those stories, and it's resilient, and resilience. And I am sure that these young ladies that are going to be receiving this, these leadership awards are resilient. There's a lot of demands, especially on young females in today's day and age, would you agree? And the fact that they are able to be resilient, but also achieve so much, says so much about who they are, and who they're, and what their character is. So now, what we're going to do is introduce a few of the representatives from the schools to actually give them, we're going to be presenting the Susan B. Anthony Leadership Awards. And I'd like to call up Jeffrey Mickles, who is the acting principal from Charlotte, Dr. Catherine Calicchio-Wagel from East High School, Bob Curran from Jefferson. Can we please welcome up those representatives?
Kamisha Henry, come on up.
Kamisha's guidance counselor, Kelly Handler, wanted to make sure that one of the things you knew about Kamisha today is she has the most contagious laugh in the entire school. Everybody just loves her, loves the positive spirit that she brings to school. You can see her right now, and hear her right now, so we're so extremely proud of her. She's going to graduate this year from Charlotte High School, and she's going to be moving on to SUNY Canton and study medicine or veterinary school, and she's just done a phenomenal job. The kids all look up to her. I remember, you know, pushing into her math class last year, and kids are struggling to do problems, and Kamisha's working away. She's one of the kids that the kids would just gravitate towards, and she just did a wonderful job, bringing kids in, helping them out, and helping others achieve, as well as pushing the bar higher for herself as she was doing that. So we're very, very proud of her. So congratulations.
I'm very honored to accept this award on behalf of my school and myself, and I'm very thankful. Thank you.
I have the great honor of representing East High School tonight, and presenting this award to Maya Fitz-Stevens, not unlike. Maya's been a very busy girl, so I'm going to have to rely on a little script here to get me through. But Susan B. Anthony once stated, "The older I get, the greater power I seem to have to help the world. I am like a snowball. The further I am rolled, the more I gain." When reading this quote, it's obvious that Susan B. was actually a true Rochesterian with the snow reference, but more importantly, it hints at the incredible potential of Maya Fitz-Stevens. Already as a senior, she's been rolling for some time now, and her snowball is already large. Maya has taken advantage of every single leadership opportunity that has come her way. During last year alone, Maya lobbied in Albany for the Dignity for All Students Act, the Gender Expression Nondiscrimination Act, and Marriage Equality. Maya also worked on President Obama's campaign in Pennsylvania, served as team captain and MVP of the East High School swim team, and is currently the vice president of the East High School of Gay-Straight Alliance. But Maya is most proud of the community service that she's done with her church youth group. She regularly volunteers at a soup kitchen, feeding meals to the homeless, and spends quality times with senior citizens. In February of 2007, Maya took a mission trip to a Navajo reservation to work with the elderly as well as young schoolchildren. Maya is a salutatorian of the class of 2009, and plans on majoring in environmental sciences. She is still trying to decide between Vassar, Middlebury, Smith, and SUNY Purchase as a school, and all would be lucky to have her. Susan Anthony would be proud of your accomplishments, Maya, and so are we. Your East High family looks forward to watching that all you do to make the world a better place.
I'd like to thank my family and friends and teachers who have all helped me along the way. I also would like to thank Susan B. Anthony and all the other strong women who have come before me, so thank you.
I'm Rob Curran, actually from Thomas Jefferson High School, and I have the distinct pleasure of introducing to you Kiara Suarez. This is particularly good for me, because I've known and been able to work with Kiara over the last four years, so being brief, I'll do my best. But to introduce her, I could tell you that she's the vice president of our student government. I could tell you that she is 15th, I believe, in her class, top, top, up there. She is well-divided, if you will, in our student leadership committee, and also she is a prominent member of the Upward Bound Program, which is a University of Rochester program that works in Jefferson. But in reference to the Susan B. Anthony Award, there are three things that kind of come to my mind about Kiara that makes her really special. Character. I've had the pleasure of being able to know Kiara over the last four years, and I can tell you through what are ups and downs, as conversations that a counselor and a student will have, that are both personal, that are academic, and everywhere in between. There are choices everyone has to make, every choice every student has to make, and I can tell you, over four years, I would say probably the right choice most every time, whether that means a conversation with a parent, a conversation with me, a conversation with another teacher. Character, and I can tell you a lot of very good decisions and choices. Second would be scholarship. Kiara has been consistently, if there are four years, that makes what, 24 marking periods or something like that, I can tell you probably at least every single one, Kiara's been on the honor roll or the high honor roll every single semester. And I will tell you, in all the challenges to our education, if you will, that is quite an feat. Perseverance. In knowing Kiara over the last four years, I've been able to see her through ups, downs, relationships, struggles that are both personal, academic, time here in Rochester, time in Florida, back again, and everything in between. And I can tell you, nothing has stopped Kiara short of her goal, and that is one, to graduate, two, to be a success, and three, to be something more. And that has been the most pleasurable thing to watch, is watch a young ninth grader turn into a young woman. So I'll tell you with great honor, with great pride, Ms. Kiara Suarez.
I'm very grateful for this award, and thank you.
And now, we're going to welcome up President Evans to introduce the next set of schools and their representatives.
I'd like to call up Susan Barnhart, school counselor from Marshall High School. Is she here? Or a representative from Marshall High School? Eleanor Peyton, school counselor from Monroe High School, or a representative from Monroe High School? And last but not least, Michael Murphy, school counselor from School of the Arts, or, and/or a representative from School of the Arts.
Would Shanta Williams come forward, please? Shanta is a perfect example of receiving this award. Shanta Williams has been a model student since entering John Marshall High School, being a leader in the classroom, modeling positive behaviors and positive work ethic, setting and working to accomplish high but reasonable goals, and having high standards for herself, both as a student and as a person. Most often, Shanta will quietly and untrusively remove herself from negative situations and people, and she's always doing her best to be her own best advocate and advocate for others, and that beautiful smile of hers is always refreshing. Shanta is ranked number two in her senior class, and continues to excel in her senior year. She's the treasure of the senior class, and oversees numerous fundraisers, and helps to organize senior class activities. Shanta has volunteered her time by participating in the Breast Cancer Walk, and other activities such as sports at John Marshall High School. In addition, she's very respectful, cooperative, well spoken, honest, disciplined, and very hardworking. Shanta is an example for other young ladies to follow, and one of the many strong reasons that Shanta was chosen as a John Marshall debutant this year at John Marshall High School. With such strong attributes, we wish Shanta luck, as she plans to further her educational ventures at St. John, or St. Bonaventure University. Congratulations to Shanta.
I just want to thank my mom, and my counselor, Ms. Barnhart, who couldn't be here, and my principal, Ms. Fitzgerald. Thank you to the John Marshall family for helping me through my three years at Marshall. Thank you.
Buenas tardes. My name is Eleanor Peyton, I'm a school counselor and a coach at Monroe High School, and it is my pleasure to stand before you all this evening to assist with the presenting of this award to a very deserving student, Kelly McGinnis. Come on up, please. Kelly is undeniably exemplifies the qualities and characteristics of Susan B. Anthony. Kelly is presently a senior at James Monroe High School, where she excels academically. She is a straight A student with an overall GPA of 3.88, and is academically ranked third out of 137 students in her graduating class. Kelly is an active member of the National Honor Society. Kelly has shown that she is more than capable of handling the academic workload. At Monroe, she is a two-sport athlete who competes on the varsity bowling and softball teams. As an athlete, Kelly shows immense dedication and perseverance. In addition, Kelly serves as an active member of the Girl Scouts of America. On the Empire, wait, sorry. In addition, Kelly serves as an active member of the Girl Scouts of America, on the Empire Statesman Drum and Bugle Corps, and the Rochester Teen Poetry Slam Team. She was the winner of the poetry slam competition, and was able to travel to New York City and California to represent the Rochester area. Her high degree of responsibility, ambition, hard work, integrity continues in the community as well. Kelly has been employed through the Youth Apprenticeship Program at the Rochester General Hospital for the past year and a half. Her responsibilities include care and cleaning of patients, as well as assisting the medical staff whenever appropriate. She has observed a C-section delivery, circumcision surgeries, in addition to live births. Kelly also has training and volunteers as a clown in the therapeutic humor department at Rochester General. In addition, Kelly volunteers at the Asbury Church Dining Center and Food Cupboard. Resembling Susan B. Anthony, Kelly is a natural-born leader who is extremely hardworking and dedicated to fulfilling whatever goal she sets for herself. Like Susan B. Anthony, Kelly is inspired to take risks, meets critical challenges, and strives to make this world a better place. Reminiscent of the legendary American civil rights leader, Kelly has a keen mind and a great ability to inspire those around her. Kelly has an enthusiastic interest in the sciences, and is working on her career goal of becoming an OBGYN. She has received acceptance letters from the University of Sciences in Philadelphia and Alfred University. Kelly is awaiting letters from University of Rochester and SUNY Binghamton. Congratulations, Kelly, and the best of luck to you and your future endeavors.
Well, I'd like to thank everyone for coming here today, and I'd like to thank Ms. Peyton and all the staff and students at Monroe High School for supporting me over the last seven years that I've been there. And I'd really like to thank my mom for supporting me through everything, through thick and thin, and raising me to be a strong-minded, determined, independent woman. Thank you.
My name is Michael Murphy, I'm a school counselor at School of the Arts. I had the privilege of introducing Leslie King this evening. Leslie is a senior drama major at School of the Arts. I've been her school counselor for the past three years, and this past year, I've also served as a faculty advisor of student government, where she has served as the student class president. During Leslie's time at School of the Arts, her marquee role as a drama major was as mama in A Raisin in the Sun during her junior year. This past school year, was it this summer? Leslie received Asset Builder Award from County Executive Maggie Brooks. This year, as we've worked through student government, Leslie has worked on a few projects. This past December, we had our first talent show at the school in many years. We also are currently in the, working on a project Trendsetter 2009 at SOTA, where it's a takeoff of the Project Runway television show, where we recently took a group of kids to the Vietnam Veterans Thrift Store and had them purchase clothing in order to support the project. Leslie is looking to attend Bethune-Cookman University in Daytona Beach this coming year, which is already being accepted in a program of mass communications.
Thank you, I am very appreciative of this award. I would like to thank my mother and father for always setting a good example for me, my fantastic counselor and advisor of the SGA, who has always pushed me to do the best for my class, and I would also like to thank God, who has stored in my spirit the virtues to become a leader. Thank you very much.
And I'd like to welcome up Commissioner Williams.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I have the distinct honor and pleasure of introducing the next set of presenters, and they are Vicki DiMatteo, who's a teacher from Dr. Freddie Thomas High School, Kimberly Garlock, and Paul Lindsay from Wilson Commencement, Kate Cochran from School Without Walls, and Michelle Higgins from the Young Mothers Academy.
I'd like to ask Crystal Vakato to come up, please. Crystal has taken a leadership role both at school and in her community. She has, she started the book club at Dr. Freddie Thomas, and she continues as the leader of that after three years. leader of that after three years. She's also a member of Explorer Post, and she is working on her certified -- get this right -- certified first responder. She will in May be ready to ride along in ambulances, and she will continue her career at MCC, where she will get her EMT certification, I think in one year. She's committed to giving back to her community. She's volunteered at the Grace United Methodist Church, where she has helped serve breakfasts on their Saturday breakfast program. And she also has volunteered at several locations for the Habitat for Humanity, and she enjoys building and digging and wearing hard hats. She has rock-solid values, which she can thank her family for. She's honest, her friends, and she's an inspiration to both her friends and her family, and everyone knows they can turn to Crystal when they need a friend. Here you are.
I would like to thank everybody for who's been in my life, who's built me the way I am now, so thank you.
Hi, I'm Kim Garlock. Paul Lindsey will be saying some wonderful words about Hazel Mullering. If Hazel couldn't come on down?
Evening. Hi, Hazel. I wasn't aware that I was going to have to prepare some remarks for this, so I hurriedly put some things together, and I talked with Hazel, and then I saw the program for tonight, and the thing that struck me about this was the quote about Susan B. Anthony. So, for a moment, let's just never mind that Hazel has been in the National Honor Society, the National Honor Spanish Society, that she's been on the high honor roll, that she's a member of our International Baccalaureate Program, that she's taken and passed several AP examinations. Let's forget the fact that she's been accepted at Hobart but would really like to attend Sarah Lawrence. Let's forget that she has been a varsity athlete on the soccer team, girls' swimming, that she's been a member of the outdoor club, the drama video club, and let's forget about the fact that she's been a volunteer third-grade teacher at her church, that she's been on the Youth Adult Advisory Council, that she's a lifeguard, and that she works at St. Joe's Soup Kitchen. And let's just gloss over the fact that she's a world traveler. She's been to London, she's been to Paris, and that her dad, her best friend, is a teacher at Wilson. The thing that struck me about Hazel is that, as Susan B. Anthony said, cautious, careful people, always casting about to preserve their reputation and social standing, can never bring about a reform. Those who are really in earnest must be willing to be anything or nothing in the world's estimation. I came to this conclusion because of two things. Hazel is always one of the first to reach out to mediate a conflict. She's always the one who champions the underdog. And when I asked her what excited her most about this award, she said that the thing that thrilled her the most, that was her best friend from East High School, was also receiving this award. So Hazel, congratulations.
All right, so I'm not a timid person. I'm just going to keep talking. Y'all probably are going to have to stop me at some point, but, um, I don't know. But basically, I went through school and I started my kindergarten year with a very important person, Maya Fitz-Stevens. I've known her -- oh, Lord, how long have I known you? Since I was, I think I was about four years old, so like 13 years. I've known her my entire high school career, and I'd really like to thank my father, who's a teacher at my school and actually teaches about half of my friends at school, which can be challenging at times, but I've gotten used to it. And I'd like to thank my mom, who's extremely, an extreme prominent person within the community service world, and I'd just like to thank Susan B. Anthony and all the women that have come before me.
Hi, my name is Kate Cochran. I'm here from School Without Walls. I'm here to honor Samantha Brettz tonight. Sam is a student who embraces learning in all settings. She has excelled in all areas of study during her four years at School Without Walls. She has also completed over 300 hours of community service during this time, at least 300 hours. She has volunteered at the Ark of Monroe, the National MS Society Partners in Safety, and the Rotary Sunshine Camp, as well as at our school. She is a role model to her peers. She stands up for what she believes is right, encourages others to do the same. Sam has been very dedicated to the arts. She has taken weekend art classes at the Memorial Art Gallery and through the Steve Carpenter workshops to better prepare her for her college studies in the visual arts. She is also exploring this artistic drive through her senior project. She has focused her nine-month-long study on oil paintings, ceramics, and figure drawing. Sam is one of the hardest workers I've ever had the pleasure to teach and advise. She always works to the best of her ability and then pushes herself to do even better. I'm very happy to see her dedication and hard work on her tonight.
I'd like to thank first Kate Cochran for introducing me and saying those wonderful things. I want to thank my family and the staff of School Without Walls. Thank you.
My name is Michelle Higgins. I'm the school counselor at Young Mothers and Introm Health Academy. I have the honor of introducing Tiffany Henry, one of our amazing seniors. Tiffany came to us in November from East High School, and she was very involved in her community and has volunteered with several different organizations. Her volunteer work demonstrates her commitment to her community as well as her leadership qualities. She was the assistant cheerleading coach for her local Pop Warner football team during the summer of 2006. She has also spent time this past summer volunteering her time at art piece, helping with clerical work. She has volunteered at the Red Cross and the North Winton Neighborhood Association, helping with several different community projects. This fall, she was also captain of the tennis team at East High School. She was captain of the Mighty Liberators Color Guard during the winter 2007 and summer 2008 seasons as well. She celebrated her culture through her participation in the Ebony Culture Club while attending East High School. At the Young Mothers Program, she's seen as a leader through her commitment to her schoolwork and her mature interactions with both peers and school staff. She's earned the distinction of honor roll every marking period this year while working part-time at Strong Museum of Science and Food Services. She's committed to her education and plans to go to college next year to continue her education. She's an amazing person and absolutely deserving of this honor.
I just want to say thank you to all my teachers and the staff at Young Mothers for supporting me, and most importantly, my mom.
And please welcome up Commissioner Tom Brennan.
Good afternoon, everybody. It's wonderful to be here with you. It's my distinct pleasure to call up to the front of the room Matthew Laniac, the principal, and Stefan McDonald, the school counselor at the School of Applied Technology at Edison, Joseph Baldino, principal of the School of Business and Finance and Entrepreneurship at Edison, and Linda Cantor, principal of the School of Engineering and Manufacturing at Edison, and finally Kathleen De Naro, assistant principal, and Molly Schley -- I apologize if I haven't gotten the pronunciation correct there -- school counselor for the School of Imaging and Information and Technology. Thank you.
I'm proud to recognize Linay Williams. Linay is an outstanding student in person. She is ranked in the top 10 of her class and has a 3.6 GPA. She was recently accepted into Virginia State University and the University of Maryland Eastern Shore. She is always trying to improve herself. Last year, she passed intermediate algebra. However, she was unhappy with her performance and went to summer school to get a higher grade. She knew that improving her GPA would increase her chances of getting into a good college. Linay is a problem solver. Instead of complaining about a situation, she does something about it. She is an active member of student government at Edison Tech. She has helped plan a senior trip to Virginia Beach, a Valentine's Day dance, two basketball tournaments, and runs the school store. Each one of these projects have made our school a place where the students want to be. Linay is a young woman who is on the path to finding herself. Although it is challenging being a good person, student, and daughter, Linay balances these roles gracefully. In her interactions with her peers, staff, and myself, I see her maturing from a young girl into an intelligent and motivated young woman. I admire Linay's tenacity and optimism. No matter how tough things get, she stays focused on the task in front of her. She is an incredibly strong person who refuses to allow adversity to get her down. I am extremely proud to award Linay Williams the Susan B. Anthony Award.
I'm honored to receive this award today. I would like to thank Mr. McDonald and my mother for making me a strong person, and I hope that I can encourage others to be better. Thank you.
I would like to call up Reba Evans-Woods, the recipient from the School of Business, Finance, and Entrepreneurship at Edison. I met Reba when she was a sophomore. We were a 10 through 12 school, and we had what's called an advisory period. And I had took my own advisory group as the principal so that, you know, I could get to know the students better and have some interactions with them. And Reba was in my advisory, almost like the first day she came in the room, and she'd asked me very pointed, very persistent, very consistently on-point questions. And I think that's great. I think, you know, they're talking about courage. Susan B. Anthony had courage, would speak up, and for a sophomore, brand-new to a school, to be able to do that is quite impressive. And it really stayed with me, and I'll never forget that. So when we were trying to determine, because we had so many choices for this award in our school, we said, I asked my secretary, Ms. Glenn, I said, "Send out a note to the students and say, 'I would like them to say you're one of the people we'd like to choose for this, or why would you think that you would deserve this award?'" And Reba wrote me a very nice note, and I'll never forget one part, Reba, you said something about your volunteer work, how could one person possibly really have that much of an effect? And I think you can have that much of an effect, and Susan B. Anthony had a great effect by herself, as you did, in your volunteer work in our school, asking questions. You want leaders and develop leaders, and at the very moment you walked into our school, I could see you had that kind of potential, and you exhibited that kind of potential. And we're also very proud to have our mom, Ms. Evans, who was one of our homeschool assistants. So it's obviously real clear where Reba's gotten her leadership ability from, because Ms. Evans has dived right into our school and tried to develop parent involvement. So I'm very, very proud to have you represented as a Susan B. Anthony Award winner, Reba. Thank you.
I'd like to thank my mom and my family and friends for motivating me to want to strive and to succeed. Thank you.
Is there a family or a parent representative here for Alicia Vineyard? Her mom. This is a real unique opportunity, because I get to thank her mom. I can tell you that the reason Alicia's not here is that she's in Las Vegas at the National Society of Black Engineers Conference. She's an admirable young woman. When she enters a room, she has this big smile, she lights up the room, she's a friendly young lady. Everybody enjoys being around her enthusiasm. Both her desire to achieve and her likability in conjunction with her determination has ensured her future success. I'm sure we'll hear great things from her as she progresses through her post-secondary education. She's well-rounded, she juggles many activities. At the School of Engineering and Manufacturing and in her community, she's a true leader. She demonstrates this through our STEM program. As I have said, she's with the Rochester Institute of Technology STEM Program in Las Vegas as we speak, going to conferences and expanding her knowledge on engineering. She's played several athletic teams. She's been volleyball and basketball player in addition. She's always surrounded her academics with activities and her job at a local pharmacy. In every activity, she manages to work her way to the top. She is captain of the volleyball team and has received awards for everything she's touched. She has a positive disposition, she's sincere, compassionate, and she loves being around people and is extraordinary herself. Alicia's drive to succeed has always been her main focus. Not only is she our salutatorian, she was also awarded early recognition as a freshman by Rochester's Urban Black Scholars Program and has maintained this recognition throughout her entire four years at Edison. In addition, she consistently challenges herself, and she takes the most difficult courses offered at our school. Right now, I believe she's taking AP English and Social Studies and may even be in pre-calc or calculus. We are incredibly proud of her at Edison and all of her accomplishments. She will continue to shine throughout the most. Recently, she has been accepted into the University of Albany and has made this her first choice. It is our pleasure and honor for Alicia to be our Susan B. Anthony Award winner from the School of Engineering and Manufacturing.
Unfortunately, Alicia is not here, but fortunate for me, I get to represent my daughter, and that's an honor for me. I want to thank the principal and all the women at Edison Tech for surrounding my daughter and keeping her grounded, and I'd like to salute all the women in here tonight. Thank you.
My name is Molly Schley, and I'm a school counselor at the School of Imaging. Kiara, if you'd come up, please. It is my pleasure to introduce Kiara Hudson this evening as IIT's recipient of the Susan B. Anthony Leadership Award. Kiara is an outstanding senior, and she was immediately and unanimously agreed upon as our school's nominee for this honor. She is a natural leader and exhibits the characteristics of the IIT student: prompt, professional, prepared, polite, and personable. She's ranked 14th in the class of 129 students and has an overall GPA of 3.78. She's applied and been accepted to six colleges across the United States and has accepted to attend St. Augustine's College in North Carolina, studying graphic arts and design. She's an outstanding school ambassador and is called upon often to represent IIT by giving guest tours through our school, by presenting and participating in community events, and by designing and working on public projects. Her three years studying in the graphic arts program at IIT has given her the technical skills to be the lead designer on many projects, including the Big Bang Institute brochure, private wedding favors and stationery, web designs, and most notable recently, she has designed the Rochester City School District's academic showcase logo design. This logo is going to be seen on over 100 city buses going through our Rochester City. And it will be highlighted at the April 4th Academic Showcase. It is my pleasure to introduce Kiara Hudson.
I'm so scared. I would like to thank God for waking me up this morning to talk to you today. I would like to thank my principal, Ms. Bonnie Atkins back there, and my lovely assistant principal, Ms. Kathleen De Naro, her daughter, and my wonderful, most amazingest person in the world, Ms. Molly Schley. in the world, Ms. Molly Schley. And to be surrounded by such powerful women made me really improve, and to see that they really care about you and that I'm not just a student with a number. I am a role model, a hero, a mentor, a therapist. I'm everything that I need to be because of these ladies right here. And I really thank them because they are my family when I'm not at home.
Powerful stuff. Gives me pleasure to, to call on Mary Aronson, principal, Bioscience Health Careers High School of Franklin. Forgive me for this one, Jenga St. Louis, assistant principal, Global Media Arts High School of Franklin, and Ali Abdul-Matin, principal, International Finance and Economic Development Career High School at Franklin.
Good evening. The Bioscience and Health Careers High School would like to welcome Takiya Nicholson. She's our selection for the Susan B. Anthony Leadership Award this evening. Takiya is no stranger to the Franklin campus because she began her academic career at our Montessori school. After living in Florida for several, several years, Takiya returned to Rochester and to Franklin, beginning her six years of Bioscience in the seventh grade. A hard worker, Takiya can frequently be seen at the Monroe Avenue Wegmans, where she usually has the longest line and the happiest customers. I have heard people say, "I will wait just to go through her line." She is warm and friendly and brings new meaning to the term "customer service." In addition to her commitment to Wegmans, Takiya also volunteers for the Red Cross. She has helped with organizing blood drives and encouraging staff and students to participate by donating blood. In what little time she has left, she also serves as a senior class treasurer, which these days has been keeping her very busy. On a daily basis, I see Takiya reaching out to fellow students and encouraging them to do the right thing. Although she has applied to a number of colleges, her first two choices are Virginia Commonwealth University and St. John Fisher, where she hopes to study forensic science. When asked who she thought inspired her to be successful, she wanted to recognize her grandmother, Loretta Young, her grandfather, Mr. Sinkler, and her aunts, Latasha Sinkler
Good evening, members of the Board of Education, and superintendent bizarre and esteemed members of the audience and fellow students. Susan B. Anthony was a woman who lived through challenging times in her life and demanded rights for herself and others. As a senior, I've been asked to assume leadership and responsibility roles, working on behalf of others, as a member of the senior class in the Bioscience and Health Career School at Benjamin Franklin High School. Although my responsibilities have been, has not been as dynamic as Susan B. Anthony's quest for women's voting rights, I've worked as a part of an all-senior women's leader council, along with my fellow classmates, Abigail Soto, Amalia Rivera, and Alexis Harvey. Tonight, I would like to thank Dr. Mary Aronson, my principal of the Bioscience and Health Career Academy, nominating me for this honor. I want to thank my, my grandmother, present here, Ms. Loretta Young, without whom I wouldn't know right from wrong, who has taught me all my manners of respect. Loretta Young is the leader of our family. I want to thank all of the great men and women teachers who have guided me through the four, the last, for the last twelve years of school. I proudly accept the Susan B. Anthony Award, and I commit to representing the principles of leadership that are her legacies: leading by doing.
Good evening. My name is Jenga St. Louis. I'm assistant principal of Global Media Arts High School, and it gives me extreme pleasure to invite Ariel Nesmith to join me. Ariel Nesmith is a Global Media Arts High School senior who exemplifies maturity, respect, and grace. I met Ariel in 2005 when she was a freshman. Then she was just a demure student who seemed to blend in and just go with the flow. She was not a troublemaker or a firestarter. She was not in the office demanding the attention of administration via referrals or emails describing poor behavior or lack of work. Instead, she was that beacon of light that teachers look forward to having in their classes. Her name was at the tip of the tongues of teachers when an example of a model student was discussed. This comes from each of Ariel's, a core teacher with whom I conferred with before preparing this biography. Some of the words that were used to describe her are diligent, fast learner, consistent, attentive, and loyal, meaning one can depend on her to be herself every day of the week, and most importantly, very kind. While it's obvious that Ariel is a likable student and popular among her classmates, she is most definitely not a follower. She knows when it is time to be social, when it's time to focus. She is definitely not ashamed of her academic strengths, and in fact, she used it to guide her successfully for almost four years of high school. Currently, Ariel maintains over a 4.0 GPA, and she is in the top five of her class. Ariel's goal-setting and perseverance led her to her applications and acceptance to Westminster University in Wilmington, Pennsylvania, St. John's University in Queens, New York, and most recently, that I learned from her mother tonight, the University of Missouri in the state of Missouri. Ariel's hard work combined with the loving support of her family and teachers is why she was chosen to receive this prestigious Susan B. Anthony Award.
First off, I'd like to say that not only is it an honor to receive this award, but it's an honor to be here tonight, and I would like to thank my mom and my family and everyone in my school who helped me to be the person that I am today, and thank all the women who paved the way for me.
Good evening. I'm Caterina Leoni, I'm the assistant principal at International Finance and Economic Development Career High School at Franklin, and it is my honor tonight to introduce Hugh Devachier Devachier is the kind of person who always has a smile and is ready to lend a helping hand. She focuses on self-improvement and her contributions as an exemplary citizen in our school community and the community at large. Devachier has demonstrated academic excellence throughout her three years at International Finance High School, ranking third in her class. She's been recognized at the school's annual breakfast of champions celebration for her repeated attainment of honor roll and high honor roll for several consecutive years. She has been student of the month and is praised for her insightful comments and overall participation in class. And when faced with academic challenges, Devachier utilizes extended day program and evening SAT prep classes to ensure that she strives towards maximizing her academic potential. Devachier has demonstrated her leadership both in school and in the community. She has inspired younger student athletes through her participation on the school's varsity basketball team. She instills the love of reading in young children under her care at a local childcare center. She has maintained a customer service position at a local fast food chain, and it is her strong work ethic that has allowed her to balance her work and school responsibilities effectively. You would think that with all of this going on, Devachier wouldn't have time for anything else, but in fact, she's an active member of her church's youth dance group. She continues volunteering her time as a role model to other young girls as a big sister for students at school number fifty. In her free time, Devachier enjoys playing basketball and tickling the ivories on the piano. She plans to continue extending herself for personal enrichment and service to others in college next year as she pursues her studies in sports management and physical therapy. She hopes to attend St. John Fisher College or Mohawk Valley College in the fall. It has been a true pleasure to have Devachier as part of our school family at Franklin Finance. We know that she will continue to make us proud.
I just want to say thank you, and I'm very honored to have this, and I want to thank my mom for all your support.
As we've heard multiple times, we've heard recognition of families, and as they say, success has a thousand parents, failure dies in a orphan. So at this moment, I'd like the families of these wonderful women to please stand. Give them some recognition. And at this moment, if we can have all of our award recipients, please come up to the front so that the board can come and congratulate you, but also so that we can recognize you one last time. And as they're doing that, just to wrap up this whole ceremony, the three characteristics that I heard in all of these girls simultaneously was strength, depth, but also, as Kelly said, independence. And I know, I'm sure it gives everyone hope that this is our future. Give them some appreciation one last time.